The other day and kind of told us about his company, but didn't have specifics to fit us as a city. And he asked me to just let him come back and present his product with a price. And we're gonna let him talk today and tell us what he could do and the approximate cost thereof. And Mr. Blatton, we're gonna call the meeting to order. We're gonna start with you today. If you'll just sit and address us or stand in the verses, whichever is you're most comfortable with.
You ready for me?
I'm ready.
Okay. So Aaron is gonna pass out some information for you guys. One of the things that we do is we kind of look toward needs. That's what we talked about in last meeting. And since that last meeting, Aaron and I have kind of gotten together and sort of looked at the city standpoint about what we feel like would benefit this city the most. And so we came up with a proposal and I had a conversation with the mayor a couple of weeks ago. And one of the things that I wanted to do was, you know, kind of present things à la carte. I didn't want to necessarily, you know, put this big proposal together. And so what we've done is kind of bullet point things and also given you some options on what we can offer. We have, you know, looked at the website. We've talked to you guys. We've answered your questions. And based on the things that we have seen in our research and also having a conversation with you guys in the previous meeting, we feel like these would be services that might benefit y'all. So what we did was we just kind of bulleted each thing and then added some prices as well. So let's just go through those things very quickly. The first thing is social media management. This would be management of Facebook and Instagram. I feel like out of the three platforms, that those are the two most viable and important right now from the city's standpoint. And we've kind of broken it down to, okay, if we just do the cities and then also giving you an option to add the other departments of the city: fire, library, municipal court, court, parking lot, police, street, water. So we kind of gave you an option there on that and on pricing. Photography, again, kind of the front porch of the city. When people are going to your city's website, what's the imagery that's brought forth on that website? What are the landmarks look like? What does the downtown area look like? What does the fire station, the high school, all those things? And so what we want to do is just kind of help you sort of take that to the next level and give you that photography. So anything that we do, you're gonna have access to. We can put it in a Dropbox folder. You can use it anywhere you want to use it. So the other thing is, you know, kind of refresh the city council and mayor headshots. Again, this is something that y'all can use in a circular or you can use it on any kind of media, print media that you have or on the website, wherever you want to use it. And there's the price for that. And then another thing that we thought as we got our heads together was just sort of a branding package. Before we met last time here, we had a meeting with some business owners. And one of the things that they brought up was getting the good information about this town out to people that might be potential business owners and people that are in industry looking to bring that industry to this area. And I think it's important to kind of have something. So this branding package includes several things. First is, you know, a new logo and slogan for the city of Hamilton. And this could be something that can be used comprehensively. It's kind of the overall feel of the city of Hamilton. Second thing is customize email signatures. And the third thing is a digital marketing portfolio to help recruit industry. So what that thing is gonna be is just kind of chock full of information about the city. We'll have, you know, demographics, other information that, you know, you might want to present to somebody that's looking to move here and do business. So it's something tangible that you can give people to sort of show this is what this city is about. You know, bring forth a little bit of the imagery and then some data that we've collected and done research on to present to somebody. This is something that certainly could be turned into a print piece and we can talk about that. But we felt like just kind of beginning that just having a digital piece that, you know, somebody in city administration could email to, you know, a CEO or, you know, somebody that does some sort of industrial development. You know, it's something that you can kind of tangibly hand to somebody. And then another thing is we put contract duration. The branding package would be kind of a one-shot deal. But we're hoping that if you guys decide to do social media management and photography with us, that you do that for two years. I'm negotiable, you know. We just, again, we're just coming in at a rate that we feel like is fair. And but I'm certainly open to discussing any or all of this proposal.
Would portions of this be available? Would we have to buy into the entire package to get any of these services? Or would there be some portions of it available if we didn't take the entire?
Yeah, you can just do one if you want to. I mean, you could just say, Al, we really need some, to refresh on our photography, you know. So that's kind of why we put it together like this. It's not a comprehensive, you know, one-shot deal. We're like, we're coming in here and you gotta accept this proposal or nothing. It's just let us know what you feel like you need and then we're happy to provide these services.
That's good to know and it's good that you broke it down into segments so that we can see what we get for our money. Questions, guys? I mean, this is open for discussion if you have questions.
No branding as far as branding things right now. It's a popular thing. Everybody trademarking their own branding and their own logo and that kind of stuff. I know in my industry, a lot of, you see a lot in the insurance business, and a lot of the agencies now are getting their own logos where you can just identify who they are by just looking, seeing, recognizing the logo. More now than I've seen in years past.
Sure.
How long a process would it be if we were to do something like this? When you get started, it takes a few weeks or a couple of months to get it up and going?
Yeah, it would just depend on what you decided to do. I mean, we could get, you know, the social media management aspect of it going pretty quickly. Obviously, there's gonna be a little bit of, you know, kind of where are we, you know, week or so to get everything, to get acclimated on where y'all are as a city from that standpoint. But we feel like we could tackle that very quickly. The photography is something that, you know, we could easily do. The branding package, one of the things that, you know, in terms of the branding package is just, you know, trying to understand, I mean, as we're driving in, one of the things that I said to Aaron is like, you know, this is kind of like the heartland. You know, small-town America is the heartland of this country, you know. And just like you're saying, I mean, it's still important to brand that. And so what we would do is work directly with y'all on your brand. This is something that, you know, the term "brand", people didn't know that they were branding themselves. Wimp Sanderson wore his trademark plaid jacket. And I've actually had a conversation with him about that. I was like, was that your brand? He goes, I don't even know what a brand was. Like, but that's what people have been doing for so long and now we're understanding the importance of that. And so, you know, we would work with you on your logos, slogans, colors, the feel of the town. And so, you know, that would be one of the first things that people have access to is the city of Hamilton's brand. And so, and also, you know, kind of the language that is used and how that sort of trickles down into the everyday culture and everyday life of this city. So there would be some, you know, a little bit of a, we'd need to work with you on that. We need to sit down and have some conversations about what y'all felt like was important. Help us to gain more of an understanding of what is gonna be the best way to put our best foot forward there. And then we'd need to obviously get our graphics and put our heads together on, you know, the language that we're gonna use with respect to that.
Do you have any, have you done any portfolios as far as with other CDs to help promote the CD?
We hadn't done anything with CDs. We've done, we've worked mostly with organizations, businesses. We've done rebrands. We've done social media management. We've done PR. We've done photography. We've done, you know, obviously, print ads and things like that. So we have done every single thing that we've got listed here. We haven't done anything in the city. Again, going back to what I talked about with the county last time, we have been working with Walker County. Most of that stuff is PR-driven, social media management-driven, and then photography-driven. So we have not done anything with respect to just doing an entirely new branding package in Walker County. That's not to say that we wouldn't, we probably will in the future. But we've been working specifically on those things with respect to the county. We've designed logos. We've come up with catchphrases. We've done all kinds of stuff.
We may have said this, but on the branding package, you said this is just something you totally already started doing? Or you're doing it type of Walker County, anybody else?
Yeah, we have done it. We've, part of that is, you know, developing language. Part of that is developing logos. Part of that is developing slogans and things like that. So in the course of what we've done with respect to our social media management and PR and all that, all that branding kind of falls under, you know, a larger umbrella, if that makes sense. So... Any other questions?
We're gonna take this in consideration. I'm gonna let them really take this home with them and study it a bit. We're gonna bring it back to another session. But we're just moving forward to try to get our recognition out there. And as you say, our logo or our brand, when someone sees it, I want them to think Hamilton, Alabama. And these are some things that we just want to move into and move forward into together. I want everybody to buy into this package together so that we all have input. I want every one of us in this room that are working for the city to have input on anything we do in this manner. And we appreciate the fact that you've been diligent in putting an itemized package together for us. We don't know what parts of this today that we might adopt. Hopefully, some of them, possibly all of them. But thank you for coming today with your proposal and we're gonna take this in consideration, okay?
One thing I did want to say before I left was that, like, it's gotta be kind of a team effort. And so, like, yeah, we're in Jasper, but we want to work with y'all. So like, and we've gotta work with y'all. So if we're gonna do social media management, we gotta work together on that. If we're gonna do a branding package, we gotta work together. If we're gonna do, obviously, if we're gonna do photography of y'all, we gotta, we gotta... But there needs to be communication and there needs to be teamwork with respect to this. And so we're gonna be helping and providing our services. But at the same time, we want to be working with y'all and listening to y'all and kind of drawing from your expertise and understanding about, you know, how we're gonna best make this work. So we just want to work with you, so...
And I feel that's the only way it can work is teamwork.
That's it.
Where are you from?
I'm from Jasper.
You live in Jasper?
I live in Jasper.
Did you happen to do buyers, buyer's rights?
Uh-uh.
Okay.
But I'm familiar with them, yeah.
And on that note too, kind of like walking everyone through the process, I would say like our expertise is the process itself. And, you know, especially with a rebrand, it's a pretty methodical, step-by-step process. And so we would be the ones leading that, but y'all are the ones providing that feedback. And that would involve focus groups, surveys, you know, whatever we have to do to get it exactly where this group and then some would want it to be, this town would be proud of. So it really is a team effort and we're excited for the potential for sure. So, thank you all.
Well, we thank y'all for coming back over today and we'll be back in touch. You and I will continue to talk over the phone and we may need you back at this table again for additional presentations to really mesh something out that comes into focus for us. We're looking at it right now, but we're not focused. We generally know what we want to do. When you really bring it into focus, then something can happen.
Yeah.
But we're getting a broader vision today.
Yeah, well, we hope this has been helpful. And I felt like, again, that this is from our standpoint, you know, and like I said last time, it's kind of hard to look in from, things from the outside in, even if you live in that town, to understand what a city might need. And so we tried to make that, you know, we felt like these were the things that would be the most beneficial to you. So anyway, we appreciate the consideration.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Has everybody got one of these? Do I need to leave another one?
Yeah, there's an extra.
Okay, all right. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Whichever we get y'all's.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye-bye. Okay, okay. Secondly, we have a proposal from our very own Gary Wayne Mees that's in your box today, I believe. And he has brought us a proposal today concerning what he could do for us and at what cost. And Wayne, you might want to just address this verbally and then we'll talk about the aspects of what you do in social media and how many of these...
Mayor, I wasn't prepared to do any kind of proposal thing today. I was just... I mean, that's pretty much what it is, is that I can help you do the social media stuff that you need to get done. I've got suggestions on Twitter and Facebook and YouTube and...
This specifically says that I would assist the city of Hamilton with posting information on social media accounts as needed to disseminate any information that they're trying to get out to the public any time, in any timely manner. I'll also assist any of the pre-existing social media accounts maintained by the city departments, including police, water, rec, fire, and assist with graphics, et cetera. I will assist the city of Hamilton in disseminating any press releases on social media accounts. And I believe it said, the recommended social media accounts to be set up will be via Facebook, Twitter, YouTube, and Instagram.
And I thought that, like, for YouTube, even if you did like a, if you, the mayor, did like a 15-minute video, say, once a month, once a quarter, as like a state of the city and what's going on and stuff like that, we would come film it for you.
Updates and changes. Updates and changes are happening constantly.
Yeah, just, I mean, that's the thing, is getting the information out to people more than just them watching the city council meeting. It would be a social, it would be a YouTube channel just for y'all.
At a cost of $200 per month is Wayne's proposal.
And I put in there, since I'm not physically able to do a lot of things, if I felt that I wasn't able to complete the contract, I could drop out. And if y'all felt that I wasn't doing the job I needed to be doing, y'all could drop out. We'd just call it, we're good for right there.
It's ongoing until one of us...
Right. And that way, we're not stuck in any two-year, three-year, five-year, even one-year contract. It's just...
This has nothing to do with the website, is it?
This has nothing to do with 49 County News. This is just me trying to assist the town that I live in and the one that I worked for for 10 years.
But as far as the city of Hamilton's website?
The website is a totally different thing. That's something, because John is the one that's involved, I don't want to step on anybody's toes because I respect him and, but we would need to get with him and see what he's wanting to do or if he's wanting to continue it or something like that. Because that's a serious faux pas in my opinion to try to step on somebody's toes. It's already got something established. And how the ownership goes with the actual web design that's already there and who owns the names and that stuff. So that would be something that would be a little bit more in-depth.
Has he been in contact with you about updating it, Mayor?
No, no. And I, I don't know how deep in this John wants to get. I need to bring him to the table and hear from him also.
And I'll be glad to assist with that and even make a proposal on it if you'd like me to. But I'd rather get his input on his side first than to just say, sorry, John, it's me, that's not right.
In the case of Mr. Blatton, this is his only business, his communications and media. And so he's gonna be working with us a little differently than Wayne will work with us or John would work with us in that this is his primary focus. He doesn't do anything else that I'm aware of right now except run this company. And he's trying to expand it. And as you can see, we haven't been paying very much for social media. And we're gonna take on a fairly sizable expenditure if we buy this package, which the city is looking to elevate our communications abilities. I think all of us want to see that. Wayne's proposal is intriguing to me in that he's not binding us for a long period of time. It's something I think we could opt in and then opt out of if we see it's not working. I'm afraid when you sign a two-year contract with them and there's certain elements of it you're gonna have to live and abide by. And most of the time when someone goes into a professional movement with you, they're gonna kind of hold you to the letter of the contract where Wayne's telling us upfront.
I'm not trying to make a living off of it. That's the difference between me and him. I do other things. I've got the pilot drone services. I've got 49 County News and I can do this.
And I respect Mr. Blatton's ability and his professionalism. And I think Wayne would give us as much attention to detail as he possibly can. And he's a professional in his field also. And I don't know, I haven't really spoke with, since we started this, I haven't spoke with John about how deep he would want to go into the media business. John has a good bit of concepts of what it would take, I think. He's a professional on computers and...
What I was talking about with John is, John does the website. This would be something completely separate that would need to be handled one way and the website is, you know...
So you're just talking about social media, YouTube, media, yeah.
The website, I've looked at the website and there are certain things that need to be finished. There are certain things that need to be updated. It's a decent website. I mean, I'm not saying anything bad about it. It's a decent website. It just needs to be finished and checked and have all the links checked to make sure that they're functional. And because over time, links change, things change.
Don't you have to update the domain name or the domain? You have to pay a fee?
Well, the domain you buy every year or every five years or every 10 years, however long you purchase it. But then you have your hosting on top of that. So I don't know how John does the hosting, if he does it in-house or if he farms it out. But he's really tied up into that because when you look, when you do the who is on the domain names, his name shows up on, it doesn't show up on the HamiltonCityAL.org because it's showing privacy. But I think that his name is the one that's gonna be on it because it also kind of matches the visitHamiltonAL.com and the Chambers. So I'm pretty sure that his is kind of interlinked with all of it.
Now, you've gone here, we need to have an in-house person.
I do that because if we do separate, there needs to be somebody that's a city employee that needs to be an admin. They don't necessarily have to do anything.
Okay.
It just needs to be somebody in-house being admin to say, okay, if I'm deciding I don't want to do it anymore, I just take myself off of it and they can add another admin.
Okay, I just wanted you to explain that.
Yeah, that's all that is. It's just having somebody in-house. And in case you have something you have to have out like right now, like within the next five minutes, you're not having to chase me down to make something up, you can go ahead and put something out. It's also that beneficial thing of having that extra set of hands, basically. But it's mainly for the admin part.
I will contact John, tell him basically what we're looking at and...
I'll have to do a separate proposal for the website part because that's gonna be a whole other can of worms.
Okay.
Because it's gonna be updating and it'll be a lot more in-depth than just setting up social media accounts and doing pictures and things like that. It'll be actually going through page by page and checking links and that kind of stuff. Finishing pages out that need to be finished and...
You could help us with pictures and stuff.
I have classes on next to the amount of website building, so I'm not, I could do that.
Would the individual departments say like if Mr. Vickery needed to get some out, would he have to get in contact with you or the admin?
He wouldn't have to, but they're gonna have, like, they already have an in-person in the police department that can do admin stuff. And something I was gonna look at with them is, is when I was at Phil Campbell, we used a program called, or a service called Nixle. And it lets you put out push messages over text message and over a website to be able to push out, say, if a road was gonna be closed or if, you know, some place is being worked on, don't drive that way and stuff like that. And it would time out the message eventually. You put a timeframe on it, it would time the message out. So we might work with him about looking, see if Nixle's still available.
Yeah, especially like the water department.
Right. And it'd be beneficial for something like that because they could say, okay, we're working on this road. Don't drive down this road. Find you an alternate route and where it's gonna be fixed by.
Water line broke or something. If you had an emergency in town, I mean, it's good way to get water out.
Right.
If you need to get it out there.
I need to find out if that service is still available because it was free for police departments and fire and stuff like that. So we need to find out if it's still available and in what capacity. It really worked well. I mean, you just have to have, it has to be a personal connection with the police department. It can't just be anybody signing up for it. You have to actually show that you're connected with the department to be able to do it.
Thank you, Wayne. I want to stop, be thinking about what we want our communications to look like going forward. I want us to have a meeting again with this subject in mind more in-depth and after y'all have considered what we've talked about here today with two men that do this business. And I'll bring John to the table with us one day and get his input as to what he's been doing for us and what he can do for us and see if he wants to actually price his product to us.
Are y'all still not under, y'all under a contract with him now?
John is probably not under a contract. I think it's under a mutual agreement. Are you aware of a contract that, he was on board... Are you aware of a contract that that, he was he was on board when I came here?
I'm not aware of.
I'm not aware that he's got a contract, he's just agreed.
I I'd even be willing to work with him to help finish that, if y'all would do it that way, I'm, I mean, he's a good long live.
Yeah, okay. Okay.
If we work on the city, I'd like to sit through the chamber and.
Well, who owns the chambers, is it is it his own entity? I think it is, I don't I don't think that that's, y'all were a part of it, but I think it's like its own little bubble.
We can talk to him and.
Yes.
Yeah, we'll we'll bring him to the table also. Uh, in order to improve this, we gotta know really what we got, I I've never known exactly what his agreement was with the city. Uh, I've just caught, from time to time, I have him to post some things for me, from the mayor's desk, I just write something and and he'll put it on the site and uh. Uh, I call it from the mayor's desk, that's everything I put on there and. Uh, and we've had this video running for a while now, that's uh, was done professionally a couple of years ago. Uh, that's uh, I don't even uh, know what we call it, it's just something that that you can you can find it by. Typing into our city's government, i- it's there somewhere, I don't know exactly, I've looked at it a few times. But I uh, I don't know how to tell you to go to it today, but it's there. Anyway, uh, John helped to split that up to to view and uh. I'll bring him in and let him talk to us about what kind of agreement he has with the city and if he's willing to uh, go more in depth. So, let's let's just keep this open-minded, now, we're we're moving forward with this, we won't. Belabor this every time we meet, we but we wanna get it to a point that we can move forward with it. Got some other things on the agenda today, Ronnie made the agenda unexpectedly this morning. Uh, he dropped a bit of news on me and I want Ronnie to talk to us today about his need. And how he views. Uh, departments like his for the future. And uh, some of the things that are in focus now, that's gonna make it more binding and more. Uh, I guess uh, difficult to maintain a force such as he has to maintain, so. Ronnie, I'm gonna give you some time today to talk with us and uh, tell us what your need is and and. How you think things are gonna be in the future, as of always, police departments like Hamilton's.
Glad you invited me up, glad to meet all of you, first time, know all of you, but first time in the career. One of the things that I'd ask the mayor about is. Within the last few days, got notification that one of my officers been offered a job with fish and game. And he hasn't been notified as to when he will start, but he had applied for it and done all the agility and everything, so I was gonna ask that. I be able to put this job notice in the paper. Go ahead and and get ahead of the eight ball on this, get it in the paper, because we have to run this thing legally for four with four turns and four weeks in the paper.
We have been.
It has it has to be done four times in the paper, and the problem was, in the past, the paper ran a Wednesday and a Saturday. Okay, I could do it in two weeks, now then we only get one paper a week, so it takes me four weeks to get this four-week legal issue in. So in order to get ahead of the eight ball and send out a notice that we're taking applications. I would like to send that out, send that notice out for certified applicants only. Now, in the past, when I've done. Certified only, we'd run this thing for four weeks and I might get two to three applicants. Some of which might be, you know, trouble for other departments and stuff, and they're just looking for somewhere else to land. And they're not desirable for what we would like to have here to keep in the long term. Uh, we've been in a constant battle for the last. Eight years, I know of, under this administration and and in the mayor's administration. Of trying to keep officers and trying to get officers, and it's a back and forth battle, it's a close-knit battle. Um, keeping your people, your valuable people is hard, I've lost people to. The University of Alabama, I've lost them to Shelby County, I've lost them to state troopers, I've lost them to, I've lost three or four to the sheriff's department. Um, other agencies and stuff that are looking to pick out and pick off. You know, good officers, and we've maintained a a pretty good, a really good department throughout the whole thing. But it's tough, and right now I've got one in the police academy, so I'm short one on the street. And recently, there has been one of the, the sheriff's department had two drug officers. Of which helped us out, my patrol officers also work drugs from a patrol standpoint, stuff of this nature. And they still do that, but they're getting none of your personal possessions and stuff of this nature. Um, some of them are good at it, some of them are really good at it, and I've got what I consider one of the best drug dogs that I've seen in my career. I've never seen a dog work like this one does, but, you know, in order to do that, in order to be able to fulfill. Our pursuit into drugs and criminal aspect only, I've got to divert personnel over into these areas. And when I do that, I take them out of out of patrol. And some of these guys, you know, I I would kinda wait, you know, pick them and I look at them, you know, to see if they've got. What it's, what I think is gonna take in order to be able to do this job consistently, is stay with it and keep their head focused in and stuff. Well, the sheriff's department has lost one of their drug officers back to patrol, he burned out, went back into patrol, so they're down to one officer. And they're working him out in the county and then they work on some, you know, violent crimes and stuff of this nature, so. Drug task force that we knew at one time is non-existent. There, the money ran out on it, the money's got, you know, different interests and stuff of this nature, so the money started going to different places, grants and stuff. And with all that being said, we've got some new. Facilities moving into this part of the country, in our our city. And the size of our city, I don't know if you guys know it or not, you was out campaigning some, so some of you realize that there's parts of this city that you didn't realize was there. But our city is the same size as the city of Tuscaloosa in square miles. And our city has the same road miles the city of Hoover does. And we have nowhere near the percentage of officers that they do, and what I'd like to do today is I'd like to ask for some incentive. To draw officers by asking that my pay scale be increased by one dollar. And then I would like to have four men in four vehicles, two of which I would designate to drugs and criminal.
Could you repeat that, please?
Two, uh, four officers.
Per shift, I.
Well, I'd just like to have four officers to be able to divide up among.
Yeah, I get what you're saying.
And the the biggest need, and and, you know, Scott can help you out with some of these questions, more so than I can, but I've drove a truck before. In some of these places, they bring a lot of good things, they bring a lot of revenue, they bring a lot of bad things. And I don't know if y'all have noticed it or not, but we have had more in the last probably six years of homeless people.
We do.
Roaming up and down these streets than we've had since I've known.
Years.
Law enforcement, yes, and a lot of it is attributed to I twenty-two. Because these people are traveling up and down I twenty-two and they'll get off, and and let me tell you, these homeless people are not just out here wandering around, like talking to people. They communicate with one another in these shelters, and they communicate with one another in these places, you know, that they get their food and stuff of this nature. So they're telling them, you know, look, how much in the good places stop? You know, you can get clothing, you can get food, you know, there's several different places, we've had some, you know, one was standing in the woods right across the road over here. I think we have one living under a bridge above town, two bridges, two people living under two bridges above town. Um, there's a male female couple somewhere down south, I don't know exactly where they're living at, but you'll see them out occasionally. We got one living in a junk car. And, I mean, we've tried to talk to these people, you can't communicate with them, we've done them the service of taking them to Tupelo. To where they can get into facilities, you know. Um, missions and stuff of this nature, and one of them actually told me out of his own mouth, he didn't like the way he was treated over there, so he come back here. And he's ready to live in a. Old vehicle here than in a mission over there.
You said four new vehicles too for them.
Yes, sir, and the reason for that is, you know, it started with Wade and carried on with with Mayor Page that. We were replacing, in two thousand eleven, they bought ten sequential VIN number. Dodge Chargers, you know, we're talking one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, rolled off the assembly line. So what was wrong, and these were first-time um, models, that were changed, they were, the the Dodge Chargers had changed that year. And they rolled off, so the ten that came off, whatever the problem was that they hadn't figured out yet was number one. Was wrong with nine, two, no, two through ten. And we put new uh, cams and lifters and everything in pretty much every one of them, two sets of cams and lifters in some of them. We entered into a program with them.
We took them to Vernon to dealership.
Yeah, we had them fixed down there, but I took them to.
All the time, they stayed in the shop all the time.
What's the uh, Chevrolet dealership? No, this one's over Port Payne somewhere over, oh, Donahue, we take them to Donahue Chevrolet. And they had a trading program going, so, you know, depending on the the mileage and this that and the other, and I don't have a single one of them that's got over a hundred thousand miles on it. And I got two of them that just can't go no more, that's sitting in the parking lot, but I tried changing these things every year with two to three, two to three, two to three. I've still got. Three operational, I think.
What are y'all firmly wanting to go to and?
Well, right now, that would be hard to say, because the the Tahos, the two thousand twenties. Quit being made and they don't have any on the yard, I've been buying what was on the yard. Every year, about two, you know, one or two that was on the yard, they don't have any on the yard. And then there's a place in Memphis that uh, they're turnkey ready, blue lights and everything, you just go up there, give them the check, turn the key, drive it back, and it's ready to go patrol after we put our radio in it. But uh, this year. Yes, this year Tahoe is changing models, they putting that big fancy front end grill and everything on them this year. So they haven't got those on the streets yet, the reason I haven't been asking, you know, I asked, did one, one or two be put in my budget. But I hadn't come and asked for them to be approved to buy them yet, because they're not there. Um, Dodge is making some Dodge Chargers. But I don't, I'm I'm not recommending no Dodge Chargers, period.
After what you went through.
And then Ford, they've had the uh, the Explorer out, or the Interceptor, I think is what they call it. It's like an all-wheel drive, but there's been some complications and stuff with it also, and I don't know the availability on those.
Did they finally get the exhaust issue where it was coming inside the cabin on it?
I don't know about that, a lot of the issue that I'd heard from some of the, the Ford people was, or people that had experienced with them. From the chief's conference and stuff of this nature, it's been being an all-wheel drive. If this tire on the left front gets low, then it tells it, you know, that this one's not turning as much, so this one's got to s- to pick it up. And the transfer case is the one making these decisions between all four, and when they turn them with low tires or worn tires or something like that. It's giving different signals and stuff, so that's not really had a lot of bugs worked out of it yet.
What's what's the average cost of the Tahos, do you know?
Right now, I don't know.
Mid thirties?
Well, like, as far as decking them completely out, probably mid thirties.
So if you got four new ones, you'd need to also get them decked out too?
Yes, sir.
Is that what include, you couldn't transfer what you got to a new one, you just had to get used from your.
No, I wouldn't, I don't have any Tahos to be taken off the road, I've got two thousand fifteens all the way up to twenties.
Yeah.
And I don't have any of them that are ready to be taken off the road.
But how many Chargers you said you got just set, or you can't even use them?
Two.
Aren't they at the street department, are they parked down there?
No, they're up there with us.
I wonder, cause I now know that two of them, I know it's two that sits there all the time.
We use them.
Sell them, get rid of them, I mean, get some out.
We can, we can, but I've got two, I've one, one, two on the street that.
You're not gonna get enough out of them that they might be worth parts.
I can't get parts to fix this one, I've gotta have two, sp- two junkers up here to keep the two I've got on the road running.
Four and all, but you use two.
Probably won't get three fifty, four hundred dollars out of a, out of a car that's not running like that, it's worth more than parts to the running cars.
We've always had had a problem keeping officers retaining. Salary because they can go somewhere else or maybe fifty cents an hour or a dollar an hour. And that's been a problem we've had, is retaining their salary, cause they can make more somewhere else.
Right now, part-time. In another town in this county. That has only one full-time officer and the rest of it's dependent on part-time, part-time, part-time there's being paid seventeen dollars an hour.
What would be your your plan if we uh, buy the the. Uh, plan? Wha- what would a shift look like, we have two patrols out now on each shift, is that correct?
Yes, sir, I have an A, A shift, well, I have a a mo- morning shift and a night shift, and then I have. An A group and a B group, and it has a morning and a nights on it, so when these are working, these are off.
Well, we work in twelve-hour shifts?
Yes, sir.
And uh, how many patrolling would we have at any given time on the shift then if we had these extra officers?
If we had the extra one, if I got the four extras. The two extra ones would probably go to night shift, giving three patrol officers. Per shift at night, and some of that philosophy comes from the fact, you know, with with the, an establishment is big. And it being the biggest one in the state of Alabama, and the traffic that it's gonna bring in here. And the extra stuff that it's gonna bring in, that these facilities are bringing in, I mean, Scott can answer a lot of these questions for you nowadays. I haven't been around them in a lot of times, but I have asked chiefs in other cities that have these type of facilities there, and it does generate. Extra traffic for them, extra calls, and if we have, if something happens. There, and there's two different incidents, you know, let's say, two trucks are broken into at two separate times, or you've got. A, you know, a fight on one side of the parking lot and a truck got broke into on the other park, other side of the parking lot. I've got an officer over here and an officer over here, you've got my entire night shift right now, and then if something happens at Tin Top. We're fifteen miles away, or something happens at Sugar Bean, we're fifteen miles away.
We need three on the shift at night, for sure.
And I mean, we have enough as far as two men on on patrol during the day, because I have in, I have investigators out. You know, and I have admin, stuff of this nature, I have a patrol sergeant that works the day shift, you know, and they can, they. They get out and help work the wrecks and answer the calls and back up the day shift officers. But the the four people, you know, if I can get the two going with nights and then I can get, if I get the four. It'd give me the ability to take two that are productive, self-motivated, that I can take and put over. Into working drugs for the city of Hamilton. Not the state of Alabama. Not, not all God creation.
Okay, I I just wondered how it would affect our shift, you know.
And see, I have two, I have two officers that work, well, one of them's working the full-time shift right now, because I've got one in the academy. When that one comes out of the academy, I'll have two, two on day shift, one on split and two on nights. And with another officer on nights, I could take, bring the the split shift officer down, leave him where he is, move him up. And that's the purpose of him being there for that.
The one in academy, is he gonna come back and start on days for a while?
I don't know.
Just go straight to nights?
I don't know, because right now, we we're we're about to have a jumble up, we're fixing to play Yahtzee.
The one that's leaving, wh- what's, when's his time to leave, do you know?
I don't know, he hadn't got his notification yet, he's expecting an email, the.
But he's pretty sure he's gonna take the job?
Yeah, he's he's pretty much told him that he'll take it, and the projection on his offering date, they're thinking maybe around first February sometime.
You you mentioned the the academy about to phase in something new in their training.
Oh, Lord, I forgot about that.
Tell us a little about that, Ronnie.
The academy is fixing to go to fourteen or fifteen weeks, I believe it is. There is already, we already have to have the high school education, we have to have the agility test, they have to. Pass the agility test day one when they get to the. We have to have the agility test. They have to pass the agility test day one when they get to the academy. So when I I try to hire non-trained personnel, the first thing that we do is we have the agility test over here at the track. Just to see, you know, if if I wanna hire you, if you can even pass the agility test or not. Because if you can't pass it, I can't waste the money on keeping you on board with me, getting prepped for the academy. We have to have them approved by Apost, Alabama Police Officer Standard Training Commission. Thirty days prior to the academy starting. And they only do two academies a year now that they've extended them like fourteen, sixteen weeks. They have.
What were they prior before that?
They had just started going in two with a gap.
What one used to be like ten or twelve?
Yeah.
Do you still have to complete it in X amount of time from the time that you're employed?
Yes.
Like they used to?
Yes.
Which means you only get two chances at the academy and you have to be let go.
When I hire them, you know, I can't hire them six months out because they've got to be in the academy within X amount of time. And six months is way too out. Because they'll start charging us X amount of dollars per day that we keep this untrained, uncertified officer on board. So I can't keep them just sitting around somewhere. I gotta get them qualified, ready to go, filed down there and approved. We also have gotten added, this year, we have to do psychological evaluations and we have to pay for it. On every candidate that goes to the academy. And I got news for you. It was hard before hiring non-trained police officers. It's gonna get real hard now. And we have to have a work keys test, which is something similar to a, a, an aptitude test. That they go down to the the ca- uh down to the college. And there's only certain times that they give it and it has to be paid for and taken and approved and sent in. They look at it. So somebody going through the academy nowadays, after just January, is gonna meet some high standards to get there.
Probably going to the troopers.
It's bad.
Yeah.
So if somebody that transfers wouldn't be a problem, the problem would be they're probably making more somewhere else.
True.
Unless they come here and can get a bump up.
Right, that's what I read.
Or if they're in that two-year gap, we have to pay to get that officer from that other city. If they've been with.
If they're outside that two-year gap, we don't have to pay anything. But if they hire, if somebody hires my new guy that's in the academy right now, if they hire him out from under me, it's gonna cost them about fifteen, sixteen thousand dollars. And they have to pay us that.
Well, that's a good thing.
And if we get somebody that's not outside their two-year obligation, and it's a state law obligation. Outside of that, you know, then we can pick them up for free after that two years. But during that two years, we have to pay, and you don't pay um prorated, you pay day one.
Really?
We have paid dearly for one in particular.
So if you're gonna invest that much, you'll make sure you don't hire them.
Yes.
Best you gotta buy them out, it's like buying a coat or something.
What's uh what's the pay right now? You said raise it by a dollar. What is it right now?
Oh, it's a, it's a step raise pay scale.
Oh, very good. It started at sixteen?
Uh, untrained, I think, starts at fifteen eighty-six. That's prior to academy.
One of the things, one of the things we've noted when Ronnie has a full. A full slate of workers. He has to have less overtime hours work when he's got all of his people on board. Uh, we can look for overtime to to cut down. Uh, and and that's something I'll uh talk to you briefly about before we dismiss today. And that's in the uh workman's comp uh evaluations and proposal that we've got here. Uh, we just received uh workers' comp uh estimates for this year, eighty thousand nine hundred and seventy dollars. Uh, when is it due upon receipt? So we, in receipt of the estimate, make your check payable to Minnesota Workers Compensation Fund. Montgomery, Alabama. They're ready for the check today. So we're gonna have to vote on that Monday night to pay our workers' comp. And uh if we have deviations uh at the end of the year, they can reevaluate this and 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 add that to it. This last year, they added seven thousand six hundred additional dollars to the eighty-nine thousand. We paid them. Last year, so this year, uh uh premiums are slightly lower than they were last year, the estimate is. But uh we'll see if we could adjust it at the end of the year based on my experience and staffing.
You have to keep in mind also that this. This particular department is twenty-four seven, seven days a week, three sixty-five a year.
Yep.
So we have people, two on the shift for Christmas, two on the shift for New Year's Eve. We got two on the shift for Easter. We got two on the shift for their kids' birthdays. The whole nine yards are out the whole year. And COVID, you know, I think just about every one of my guys have had it and I've had it twice.
Start your needs one more time for the record, Ronnie.
I need a a dollar increase on the pay scale. And I need four officers and four loaded vehicles.
How many officers would there be total?
Including the four? Eighteen.
That's including you and?
Yes.
Now of the four officers. You're gonna try to go after one that's already.
I'd rather have all four of them that are already certified, ready to handle them.
If a guy comes into you already certified, can you, do you have some kind of discretion on what to start him out at? Does he have to go all the way to the bottom?
You guys are all the one that proves the pay.
Do you have a?
Yeah, I mean, I've got a pay scale.
Yeah, that's.
You you recommend it in certain, then we approve this pay scale based on his qualifications or her qualifications.
If you get somebody you really want, you can, you can go after them. Okay.
And basically, these, I guess, the four officers. Be working, you said drugs and what, crime, is that what you said? Drugs and?
No, I'd like to have those four officers so that I've got the the ability to be able to take two out.
Two out, gotcha, okay, okay.
You know, I I can't tell you that two of the ones that I'd be hiring are gonna be put in that division and then two are gonna be put in patrol. I want four brought in here and then if, you know, if the two happens to be in these four, then that's great. But if there's only one in this four, and then I get one out of my current force.
Okay, gotcha, yeah. So how many you got right now, fifteen?
Fourteen.
Fourteen, okay.
And one of the best dogs in Alabama.
So is that what we would need to put on Monday's agenda to post a job opening for four?
A job opening for certified police officers.
Okay, the the uh the council is is gonna need to think on that and uh and. But the. We're gonna have to, we're gonna have to post some jo- uh jobs. You're gonna have to decide if you wanna add four at this time, two, three. I mean, I'm gonna, I'm gonna listen to y'all's recommendations. You've heard from Ronnie, what he says he needs. We're gonna meet all his needs or we're gonna do part of it. We're gonna have to have some manpower. And uh we'll have to decide if we're gonna go the full gamut or if we're gonna do portions of it and uh, you know.
But you know you got one leaving for sure, is that correct? Do we need to go ahead and post for that one?
What if we post, what if we just take applications for certified officers? And then. We can look at four.
If we.
You know, if you tell me two, if you tell me three.
Four, then we have to provide automobiles for the drive, cruisers, so.
And then you get X amount of applications.
I take four out of them and I bring them to the mayor and then.
We'll address the pay request change. Uh, he can't promise them this in his package, so. We're probably gonna need to address that, either vote to do it or not to do it. Uh, so those two things at least need to be on the agenda to uh make a salary adjustment. Uh, for the policeman or uh and to post jobs. To take applications for certified officers.
Also, let me tell you this, this dollar in there pay cre- pay increase on my, that doesn't, I don't have anything to do with me.
When was the last, last time you had it increased?
Me?
Or for the officers, department?
They got a step raise in November. And that's what you'll be increasing by, is my step raises, my um. What do you call it? My pay registry.
Pay scale.
Pay scale thing. You'll increase it by a dollar in what it is, is the position of the beginner. It'd be instead of fifteen thirty-six, it would go to sixteen thirty-six. And if.
The scale moves up one dollar.
Yeah, and then if I've got one that's making seventeen eleven, it'd go to eighteen eleven.
Right.
And then, and see, I'm I'm not affected by the pay scale. So I'm not included in that.
Yeah, just so, on the, on the vehicles, is there any, I I assume that you know which ones you want before we vote, just give them to you. Do you want that? Are we gonna vote on that Monday? The vehicles or do we need to wait till we, till we do the hiring?
Address the vehicle matter at this, at this point.
Yeah.
If we hire the officers.
We just need to, I've got to make sure what's available as far as vehicles.
Yeah, yeah.
Get some prices.
See what's available and how much there are. We might could get one or two this year and one or two next year. Or four, I mean, I don't know what our budget looks like, so I'm not promising, I can't do that, but I'm just. So how's I know what it costs?
At least we'd have an idea of them.
I can't remember what they call, so.
One of the things I wanted Ronnie to be here today for was to explain to the council and to me. What makes up a department. How difficult it is to man a department and and how how often the shifts. I mean, the uh guard changes, I mean, we've had a lot of turnover and. It's just not real easy to maintain these officers and being a policeman, as you've noted nationwide recently. Has not been very easy. Officers being charged often with crime, uh they're being charged with murder. They're, you know, because they've had to go out there and and things doesn't go right. Then the charges are brought against them. So being a police officer is not the easiest thing in the world right now.
And all them officers haven't left to go to better jobs and stuff. There's some of them that left under disciplinary actions and. Several different things, you know, that didn't fit the standard and. Situations that no one's gonna approve of and the mayors weren't gonna approve of, councils weren't gonna approve of.
Ronnie, we'll. We appreciate you giving us a kind of rundown. I took a little time to do it, but we needed to hear it straight from you.
I've been waiting patiently.
It's not the rumor mill anymore. We've heard it from the man that runs the department and. Uh, you know, this, these are the difficult times he's in and uh. And he looks at the need because he sees the need. He knows how far he can spread his crew. He knows how much they can stand to have put on their backs every day and 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 he sees the breaking point. And a lot of times, those people that leave are just tired of doing their job because they've got that much to do. And I, I mean, it it's just. It it's part of the nature of the job and the and the circumstances, so. Uh, we'll take it all in consideration, Ronnie.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Early today, we need a copier for our city hall. Our copier's twelve years old and it's what, counting the copies, and that's kinda how we pay for our services. And uh according to Amy, she's got some information on the one that they're recommending for our city. It's thirty-two hundred and something dollars, thirty-two seventy-six to buy one. Uh, we could lease a copier for a hundred or so dollars a month, a hundred and something a month. For thirty-six months and we actually want to pay more for it, paying a lease. I think we need to consider purchasing a copier. Uh, this would be a Xerox product. Xerox B seventy thirty S, uh copy, print, scan, email, fax. Uh, and it'll have two trays and a stand with it.
Mayor, who's to take the clothes from them?
Look at this, I I don't see the name of the company. I think it's the people that. People that have been servicing city hall all these years is I think who she got the copier uh information from.
Is that a Mertman thing? Is that a Mertman thing for another department or trade-in or? I mean, rec center or somebody that might need a copier that, what, use as much as we could?
They have one at the rec, I believe.
I didn't know.
Do mechanical things to it before you can even use it.
Amy's done a feasibility thing on this and that's what she's recommending and. Uh, I kinda took my information from her. I don't know a lot about copiers. They've gotten more complicated. I know that it's hard for a man that's not used one a lot to u- even use one now. I'd spend several hours at the copier if I had to make my own copies every time, I guess. Need the water fountain back by the copier because I'd be back there a while. But anyway, it's a very valuable tool for us. We use the copier a lot and uh.
And a lot of other departments.
Yeah, it does, currently it does it copy and. Our court magistrate has to do a lot of copying on it and different things. It won't count our copies and that's one of the big issues with it. Uh, it'll make a copy, but it won't count it, so we don't, we can't keep up with our expenses.
We get rid of that, we just, we make it. Like you mentioned, put it at a different department instead of just getting rid of it, yeah.
I'll check with Amy, are we, I don't know if that's something they talk about that he might have been able to take that with him.
Okay, we're gonna have that on the agenda Monday night. We'll have this uh uh bill for eighty thousand nine hundred and seventy to be approved for our workers' comp. And here's a copy of that. Go on, we'll see the analysis on it. You're welcome, pass it around.
We'll get a final bill that will add more to that.
Uh, had a, had a, another comment about our garbage matters. Um, we've had a wreck with our truck. We've we've warped our tailgate on our new truck. We're having to get it replaced, so. Um, uh, there was a half wall over at Twin the days we were having to unload over there. And there's no backup thing camera on the truck. I thought there was, but there's a camera on the top that sees the garbage go in the hole up there. And a, and a camera on the sidearm, but we don't have a backup camera, so there's a little half wall. And he hit it hard enough to warp our gate. Now we have to take the back hole and press the gate to make it latch. And when it gets real full, the latch gives loose and it springs open partly. So we're gonna have to have about a twelve thousand dollar repair job done on our uh new garbage truck. I don't think, I don't feel like it's negligence is the reason it got damaged. It just, two po- two men were standing out there when he was backing up. Nobody hollered, stop. They just kept having conversations until he hit it. You hit the wall. Uh, so anyway, uh. We've got damage on our new truck and we're getting, we've got an estimate to get it repaired and.
File on insurance?
We feel like that we need to pay for it. Uh, because if you file it on insurance, guess what? The company's gonna say you've had a claim. We're gonna raise your premium to cover this, so. And we're reviewing our insurance package tomorrow with Ricky and uh you can't vote.
No, I can't, I can't, I know.
Uh, and uh, but we'll be looking and comparing uh the package. I've got the previous two packages o- on my desk to to look at and see what the changes are gonna be. But we'll be reviewing. But we'll be reviewing our, our package of insurance, uh, equipment, buildings, uh, liabilities. Uh, everything will be in the package that covers our city except this workman's comp thing. Um, this will cover our fleet, everything, so, uh, we'll be voting on that Monday night. It'll be there for your review. If anybody wants to see a copy of it after tomorrow, I'll have a copy before you vote Monday night. And, uh, it's an expensive venture, let me tell you. Cause we, we insure a lot of things for a lot of dollars. Uh, that's one of the things that's gonna be, I, I wanted to mention though, the garbage truck itself is working beautifully. There is, there was a question about why we left a green can sitting and didn't pick it up. Well, the red can wasn't there to present itself is the reason the green can didn't get picked up. This is what I questioned Mike on, he said, the red can positively identifies that it's a city customer. This, everybody got a can, that can needs to be the first one put out every time. And he said, then if they have a second can, set it beside the red can with a little spacing, we'll pick it up. But if you just put a green can out there, that doesn't necessarily identify you as a city customer.
Even, Mayor, even though we gave every household.
In the city limits.
In the city limits, a garbage can. Just because they don't have that out there that, say we have a green can and they didn't put out the red can, we're not gonna pick up their garbage.
We, we, if we don't know for sure that they're our customer.
Though we gave everybody, every house in the city, so why is it a dispute, uh, it shouldn't be a dispute? If we gave everyone a garbage can.
Got a red can, it needs to be the first can that comes to the road with.
Mi- miss, I, I would be okay with us and, and I don't, I don't see a problem and I think we might make an agreement as the council. If we gave everyone a can, then I, I understand that that notifies that they're a customer, but if we gave one to everybody then. Say, say they don't have enough garbage to fill up both of them, but you know, like for example, I know somebody, they exchange out two cans, but both have been approved. You know, I, I just don't see it right with us saying that unless you have that red can out there, we're not gonna pick up your garbage. Because, I mean, you know, i- if they've both been approved and we gave one to everybody in the city limits, then we know they're a customer.
They know what the routes are.
And, you know, and that, that's where I stand.
I agree.
You know.
Well, didn't we say if it had the metal bar in the, in the right place, those were as good as the red ones?
Same as the red, it's just a different color.
And we know they're a customer, they've been picking it up forever. But I mean, I know, I understand Mike's part, he wants to get the red as, as the first priority. That's the reason, he wants to be a first priority can. But sometimes you people in that house forever and you, they just happen to have a green can.
Sometimes the, uh, other can is an inferior type can. We want people to use this red can if they will. The system works best if it works best. If you start being haphazard with it. And we've got a fairly new driver on the, uh, on the route, uh, he's just been operating, uh, the route since the new truck came on and. It helps him to identify. We've got some areas where the county down the same road. One side's picked up with the county, the other side's picked up with the city. Uh, and right out here just off seventeen, we've got that very scenario. So the red can being out there helps us a lot. Um, and I, I asked Mike today some questions about this and he said, do I need to come? I said, well, we'll see, but we'll have him back and, and he says for the most part, it's working great. Uh, but we, we still have a few little, uh, quirks. The red can is a real tip off that it's our customer. We like to get that can to appear first. Then the second can, you know, we're gonna pick it up, but we like to identify the customer by the red can. Cause it's, it's the can that we gave everybody and they all ha- every household has one. And, uh, anyway, we'll discuss this some more, but that's the reason if someone's garbage was left, they didn't have the red can. Out there as the primary, the, the second can is supposed to be the secondary can if they have an overflow. But anyway, i- if you guys want them to pick it up irregardless, then, then we're gonna tweak it and, uh. You know, uh, he's just trying to get a system that'll work. Uh, the, tonight, the, uh, Arts Council will meet, uh, the Jerry Brown Festival is in question. Uh, it's possible that the, uh, festival will be canceled this year. Uh, they've already had some people call in and say we won't be bringing our booth this year. So they're gonna discuss it and do what they thinks best tonight, uh, we'll probably hear from them tomorrow. Uh, as to their decision. We hate that this, uh, COVID thing keeps hanging on. The vaccine's not happening as quickly as we want to and, uh. I think the vaccine is gonna still be the, the help we need to get past this, but it, it's coming kinda slow. But the Arts Festival is in the balances over this and, uh, we just hope we can have it, but we're not sure. Uh, another thing that, uh, we'll have in our next work session, we had it on today's agenda. Just wanted to mention to you guys, we gotta decide if we're gonna do everything at the Sullen's House or if we're gonna do. Part of the work, uh, and, uh, Andrea's gonna meet with us at the next meeting. And have our plan together and then we gotta decide if we want a contract specifically. Uh, for all of it, part of it, or if we wanna hire it out. And, uh, that's something that we need to make sure that we spend good dollars for good purposes in this. Cause we're gonna spend a good bit of money in my estimation. At the end, at, on another subject, and then we'll talk more about Sullen's House at the next meeting, we're running out of time today. Another subject is, uh, the front of our industrial park at I twenty-two, there's a little gap. It's not asphalted between the road that turns up to Tom Bigby Electric. And the gate of our park, there's a rough spot there and I'd like to consider finishing that with asphalt. Um, and if you wanna drive down there and take a look at it, we're gonna discuss it more next time. Also, and decided we wanna do that, but I wanted to put it, it out as a thought today. There's a little w- work that we need to do at the service road that goes into the huddle house and the hotel. Uh, that'll pass the, in front of the, uh, s- service station that's there, the filling station. And, and a little bit there in the front of Love's. It's been wallowed out a lot, potholes, we're gonna fix those. I talked to Kevin today, he's just looking for a good day of weather to. Repair those holes, but we may want, need to consider some more asphalt there too, so. I want y'all to look at these places, uh, make it, uh, a point to look at these places and then give me your recommendations. What you think we need to do. Uh, I've had Kevin look at it, he knows there's some work that needs to be done. He doesn't have it all done yet, I talked to him this afternoon and he said he's just looking for some better weather to do it in and. Uh, he's gonna do some things, but if you want an extensive work over on that service road, then let me know and we'll get that done. Um, we, we had too much in today's meeting. Uh, I don't know a lot about this thing that I passed around before is, uh, from, uh. The state health officer, uh. They're asking the city, I think, to provide the money to, uh, do a clinic for vaccinations. Uh, I don't know how you feel about that, um, I thought the hospitals were administering this medicine. Here's a man in the medical business, what do you think about this?
I mean, are we? We have to, we just have to pay the nurses, do I understand that right?
Uh, the clinic wouldn't be our responsibility to locate the clinic. Our responsibility is paid by the staff that administers the vaccine, that I understand it.
But there's no, um, I know that the, the states doing a particular order that they're going in, is this gonna be available for everybody?
Uh. I have no clue. I'm sure they'll probably have to still follow the, the protocol of, of. How the vaccine's coming to, to people and I just know that I've been designated in the next group, the seventy-fives and ups. Uh, got their vaccine recently and the next group will include me. So I'm looking forward, I got notice today, as a matter of fact, about thirty minutes before this meeting that. I can come, uh, Thursday and get my shot and I intend to get one, so. Um, that's the first I'd known about it, uh, but, uh, I've been waiting and, uh. I didn't, I would, I didn't say I've been patiently waiting, I've been impatiently waiting, I want my shot and, uh. I hope all of you want a shot because I think it's gonna be the answer. Uh, I've heard several people say, I will not be taking the shot, but that's a personal decision and. Uh, I'm, I'm in the high risk group, so I want my shot.
You may wanna mention about Love's needing employees, that they don't have the workforce for them to be able to.
Yeah, that's another thing, uh. Scott, uh, helped to bring this to the attention of, uh, of us, uh. He had talked with the, the service center down there and, uh, they've not been able to hire staffing for the service center. Uh, they're, they're shorthanded, they don't have half enough people yet. And, uh, so we can get the word out and any, by any means that they're looking for qualified workers.
What are they looking for, like mechanic to, welder or?
As far as technicians.
As far as not, if they have people interview, just not qualified or just a little bit of everything?
To be honest with you, I don't know.
Don't know.
I mean, um, you know, he had told me that they had hired two and they needed like twelve. And since we, we all kinda chipped in, pushed on Facebook, they, they jumped up, uh, drummed, uh, a couple of more applications up. So I don't know if those guys have been hired or ladies or whatnot, but, um, and I don't know where they're staying right now, it's been a couple of days since I asked them.
And housing, uh.
Yes, and, and, and that was another thing, some of their managers that they bring in are, can be temporary folks and, and. Can be, they can be, they can work out into permanent, you know, permanent jobs here, but some of them are temporary and they need, you know, they need places to rent. And so we, we were able to provide all of that to, we, we gave them eight or nine names of people that have mental properties. So that was a huge help to them and, um, on conference call, they made mention of all that. So they, they appreciated the help, so.
Well, we want them to have success in our community and, uh. Uh, we've never had a, a big truck stop in our community, we've had some smaller ones. So it's been one down at Dugan Creek for a long, long time, uh, that had a parking lot for trucks. Uh, but this is a full service truck stop with a, a service center. Uh, they'll do much more in the way of, uh, accommodating the truckers than anything we've ever had, so. We want it to get off to a good start and do a lot of business and the more the community can be, pitch in and help, I think the, the better success it'll be.
And according to the, what will be the shop manager, they pushed their open date to, uh, February fourth. And then the shop actually is gonna be only into March, so. Takes a little more time to staff shop.
Thank you, Scott, for kinda updating us. Anyone else have anything that we need to bring out to discuss today? And we'll, we'll, uh, get Mike down here next, uh, round and talk about the, uh. Uh, garbage can, what we'd rather see happen. He's gonna work with whatever the council wants to happen. He's just trying to get a system down that works. And if we gotta tweak it a bit or something that you guys are catching complaints about, then he'll want to help remedy those too. Cause we, we don't want you, you all bombarded with unnecessary, uh, community complaints. Uh, if we can head those off, we wanna do it. Anything else today?
Mayor, we talked, it's been several work sessions ago about far as cleaning up the city, abandoned properties and. Have we looked at any of that and what, what step do we need to?
Well, since we've discussed it, I have, uh, heard of a couple of cities that have gotten some money to, for demolition. I'm gonna try to follow up and find out, uh, where the source is because I think we're gonna be out some expense. Once we endeavor into this, I believe we'll be, uh. We're just gonna have to take our trucks and, and tricos and load these houses up that we tear down and. Uh, keep up with expenses and we don't have some grant monies, we're gonna have to figure a way to, to pay for that. Whether we just.
Angie Oliver and, and Mayor Price of Winfield might be able to help you with that, cause they've had a couple of rounds that they've done with that. I think you and also had one round that they did with the grant money to tear things down.
Okay.
Is, is there not a process where if we went out, I know, of course, I know. Every situation is different as far as whether somebody can afford to pay for the demolition of their abandoned property or. Abandoned, abandoned houses or whatever, but I know there's, there's people in town who have old properties that have just. For whatever reason, just let them just, they're all dilapidated and can't afford to have it torn down. But doesn't put the effort into it. I mean, I guess what I'm trying to say is if we sent them a notice. Say thirty days, sixty days, whatever, and they didn't have it done. And we went out on our dime and, and, um, had it demolition or, you know, the pop, property cleaned up. Could we not, is there not some kind of law that we could put a lien on the property?
Yes, and, yes and no. Yes, if you follow every step of the, of the law. And that includes your attorney, uh, pre- preparing the proper notices. Uh, and making sure those are delivered to the people that, uh, own the properties. They have to sign for certified mail and once they're notified, if they don't act. Then you have rights to go against the property. If you spend money on that property, clean it up, you have rights and. Uh, we'll have to follow every step to be able to do that. If we fail in one step, we probably can't do that. And the burden would fall on us. That's where, uh, some of that grant money would come in handy to. Uh, there's people who literally can't afford to pay for demolition.
Oh, yeah, that's why I know every situation is different.
Uh, the house could never be fixed for leaving again. It's, uh, some of them are, some of these houses have leaked so long and have grown so much black mold. You, you're gonna have trouble even getting rid of it, you gotta find a place to put it. Uh, but we've got, we got numerous properties that need to be condemned. Uh, they're, the owners are not gonna repair them. Uh, they might, if they were put on notice that they're building on the property following the demolition. They might have the demolition done on the, on, on their own.
I just know there's three on Lover's Lane right there next to my house.
Do I have a list, you want right now, of, of certain properties? I'm just, just curious.
Months and months ago, we made a list and, and we wrote twenty odd letters and got a few responses. Actually did some good, but not nearly enough. They'd go part of the way and wouldn't go all the way, you know, dead bush hog and. Uh, burn up the garbage that laid around the place and, but they never would really take the steps they needed to do to, to finish up. So, yeah, we had a list, we, I, uh, I probably can go back and, and find the people we put on notice before. We actually got the police to drive around and, and make a, a note of the, an address of the places that needed to be addressed and. And we sent out a number of letters to people even as far away as Michigan and. And, and we sent out a number of letters to people even as far away as Michigan and pl- places like that that, that all the people had moved away. Uh grandpa's old place is owned by three brothers, you know, and uh this kind of thing. And none of them agreed on anything. So that's why they hadn't done anything with the property. Uh they were all heirs to it, but nobody could agree what to do with it. So the property just sat there.
Has any of that been happening like recently?
We haven't done anything just recently. It's been probably two years since we've uh really got in depth on anything. And uh first couple of years, we thought we could do so, so much and, and we found out hard it was to really do it.
Because when you put that burden back on the city, you're spreading street sanitation even thinner than they already have.
Yeah.
They need more people to work, to be able to actively go and clean up properties. Because they're having to leave other things that they need to be doing to go do that.
We went over and destroyed uh three mobile homes and cleaned up a, a mountain of debris uh over in one area off Old Ivy Trail. Sent the man a, a bill and he sent us a check, paid for it. It was an amazing thing how it worked out. But it took those guys several days to complete that work, three or four or five days with our, with our track hoe and, and uh truck running. And then they had to dispose of the rails. I had to take a torch and cut the rails into so they could handle those. So it, I mean, it's just not easy. It's not, there's nothing easy about it. You just have to get in the trenches and do the work. And uh the grant money, I think, would, would be a help to us. Uh I'll talk to Randy Price and see where he got his money. I understand he got some and Max may know too. Max might, I think he may have got a little money.
I can't remember if it was him or if it was underfill the previous time. But it, when they demolished the, the old hospital was part of that grant money that they got to take care of old buildings.
Yeah. Okay. I, I would think there's uh, I heard that the city of Birmingham was granted a good deal of money to demolish some areas that uh had been condemned by their city. And um I probably won't contact them, but I'd like to talk to some local governments that have got some of the money. I'll try to know more about that next time we meet and we'll try to set a plan forward uh for the spring. And uh I think we'll want to uh make sure that we can uh have some longer days and, and devote some hours. We may have to work, work our guys some overtime to get that accomplished along with their other work. But uh we've got some places that really need to be cleaned up. It, we've got some really ugly spots. And uh uh I've uh had some results and I've had some uh promises that were broken on, on matters like that. Thank y'all for being here today and uh I'll try not to keep you overtime. We'll try to get our uh focus on these uh times that we meet uh a little more in focus and, and maybe just um a couple of items, maybe is, is about all we need to cover in some of them. Some of them, we, today we had more than that. Just some things for comments. We've just got through the holidays. I think this thing will smooth out a bit uh uh when we, of course, our very next meeting will be interfered with for a holiday, a federal holiday. So we'll be meeting on Tuesday night instead of Monday night for our next meeting. So um I guess we never fully over the holiday matters. So you think you are and then you're not. But did everybody sign our minute book?
Yes.
I appreciate you doing that for Angela.
Don't forget to like and subscribe to our YouTube channel at www.youtube.com backslash forty-nine county news TV.